Not yet.
Senator Barnes, Senator Uggun, Senator Ada, Senator Blas, Senator Taitegui, Senator Benn and yourself, Madam Speaker, it's two, four, six, seven.
Seven. Okay, thank you very much. As soon as we get a quorum, then we should start session. Thank you very much. I mean, at Chentan, a legislature in Guam is called to order. Senator Respecho, you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, Madam Speaker. I move that we adopt the session agenda dated March 30th. And there's an addendum to that, Madam Speaker, and it's another sheet that's been passed out highlighting 14 bills, two resolutions, and two appointments that would be on the second reading file. The session agenda is blank under second reading, but then there's another sheet which I'm asking that it be recognized that this is our session agenda for this week's session.
On the motion then to adopt the attached order of the agenda items without any objections, order. I'd like to ask Senator Frank Blas Jr. if you can lead us in -- oh, no, not you, you're going to sing. To lead us in prayer, then can I ask Senator Espodan to lead us in prayer, and then for the singing of the Guam hymn and the national anthem will be Senator Frank Blas and the recitation of Ina Frese by Senator Palacios. Okay? Prayer, Jimmy?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the privilege. Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you thanks and to give you praise for all that's happening in our lives. Father, as we begin this session, we ask you to watch over us and to guide us in our thoughts and our words and our actions so we may always represent the best interests of the people of this island. Heavenly Father, we ask you always to watch over this island and its people, take care of us and lead us in the right path so we may always serve you well. Father, again, we give you thanks, we give you praise in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Senator Palacios, the recitation of Ina Frese.
Ah, Jesus mercy, Madam Speaker, I put in the dot. Posta tutun. Ii de frese. Gine de mostakilu, gi hinasoku. I mostakalung, gi kurasonhu. Zani mostfigu na nina chinihu. U fresin maisazu para baihu protehi. Zan hudefendi, i hiningi, i kurtura, i lingwahi. Ii aihi, i hanu mitano, chamoru. Ni irenshaku, diritsu gine naszu ustata. Esti hu afitma, gi hilu i biblia. Zani banderahu, banderan chamoru. Banderan Guam.
Thank you. National Guam hymn and national anthem.
Panogi chamoru, puri tanota. Kantaima tunya, niagito du iluga. Hara i onra, para i goriya. Abiba i islasen para. Hara i onra, para i goriya. Abiba i islasen para. Toru i tempu i pas, para hita. Zan gine ni langit na bendisyon. Kontra i peligu, na fansa fulham. Zeus protehi islan Guam. Kontra i peligu, na fansa fulham. Zeus protehi islan Guam. Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Uggun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavill. Senator Cruz. Senator Espodan. Senator Guthertz. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Penlinen. Senator Rector. Senator Respecho. Senator Taitegui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampin.
Present.
Madam Speaker, I wish to report there is a quorum.
Senator, the majority leader, for excused.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that Senator Cavill and Vice Speaker Cruz be excused from today's session.
On the motion then, without any objections, order. Messages.
Under approval. Madam Speaker, I call for the approval of the Legislative Journal dated 2/16 to the 27th, 2009, subject to correction.
Oh, I thought we did that already earlier. Okay, then, so on that motion, without any objections, order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion, without objections, order it.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are messages from the Governor, and I move that those messages also be appended to today's Session Journal.
On the motion, without objections, order it.
Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move the same, that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion, without objections, order it.
There are no reports of select committees, so I move then, under item 12, that Bill Number 85 and Resolution 65 be deemed introduced and given its first reading.
On that motion, without objections, order it.
Madam Speaker, under motions, I guess I already made the motion regarding all these bills and resolutions for the agenda, so if I may proceed to legislative concurrences?
Please.
Thank you. I move then, from the Committee on Utilities, Transportation, Public Works, and Veterans Affairs, on the appointment of Mr. Christopher Cavill Camacho to serve as a member of the Guam Contractors License Board with a recommendation to confirm. I move that that be moved down to the voting file.
On that motion, without objections, order it.
From the same committee, and on the appointment of Mr. Richard P. Gumbao to serve as a member of the Guam Contractors License Board with a recommendation to confirm, I move that that be moved down to the voting file.
On the motion, without objections, order it.
Okay, Madam Speaker. Bill Number 23, I guess, is on the top of the second reading file, and the Clerk's Office is making copies of the most recent version of that committee report, so I move for a minute recess.
Okay, we're going to go on recess. The legislators back in session. Senator Espodan, you had a question?
You know, there are various amendments for the amendment to the bill.
Oh, okay.
If I could just have 30 seconds, Madam Speaker, just so we can pass it out, because as I present the bill, I would like to go ahead and add on the amendments that are necessary.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and take another minute recess.
Thanks, Madam Speaker.
The legislators back in session, Senator Spalding, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to have bill number 23 LS as substituted by the Committee on Municipal Affairs Aviation Housing Recreation to be accepted.
Accepted. On the motion to accept without objections, order.
Madam Speaker, I move to place bill number 23 on a third reading file, and I'd like to speak on the bill.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this is a bill that would, well, let me just start this way. When I was younger, I used to go to boxing matches and even some wrestling matches here on the island, and those were really forms of entertainment, of visual entertainment back then. Nowadays, one of the most popular sports, rising sports, if not the most popular rising sports in terms of unarmed combat, has been mixed martial arts. The problem with it, though, is that it has not been regulated by any government regulations or anything else, so the rules and the regulations are actually governed by the promoters and private interests and the private sector. Now, in working with various entities within the industry, basically we have spoken on the matter, and they themselves would like to see the sport legitimized. And in essence, what happens here is that the reason why they're looking for legitimization is because those within the industry of mixed martial arts have expressed the interest of making Guam perhaps the center of mixed martial arts throughout this region. And of course, to follow that, to be able to make that happen, it has to be, there has to have some kind of government oversight. And this is why the industry itself has worked closely with me to try to move forward with a bill such as this. This bill would place mixed martial arts under the purview of what is now the Boxing and Wrestling Commission. But because the Boxing and Wrestling Commission legislation was actually enacted back in the 13th Guam Legislature, a lot of the rules and regulations apply basically to boxing and wrestling but not to mixed martial arts. On top of it, some of those rules that apply to boxing and wrestling are also a little bit outdated and need to be updated. And this is exactly what this does. The other prospect for the mixed martial arts on this island, if it were to become the, if Guam was to become almost like the focal point for this region for mixed martial arts, is the possibility of growing sports tourism on this island, and that has a big bonus. Because if we start bringing in international fighters into Guam, then there is a potential for, first of all, live coverage, TV coverage, as well as the potential for people from other countries to come in and watch these events. The other reason, another compelling reason for this bill, for this makeover essentially, to add mixed martial arts to some kind of government regulation, is basically for the protection of the fighters involved. My colleagues, if they'll take a look at this, will definitely see that there is a medical section in which the fighters get examined before and after the fight, and as well as there is a financial component in terms of guaranteeing that the fighters receive exactly what was promised to them. This also will lead to increased revenues to Guam coffers every time a fight is put on. Those who have been to any of these events will know that they have been held, a lot of them have been held at the UOG Fieldhouse and have been packed to capacity, and right now, the government really does not receive, aside from the gross receipts tax, anything over that. And this, in working with the industry, seems palatable to be able to give back something to the government over and above just the 4% gross receipts tax. And lastly, the control, this bill will actually give control over rules and regulations of the sport for the participants in which the commission itself will be able to develop guidelines and regulations which will help basically look after the best interests of the sport, the fighters, and making sure that the monies that should be generated and go into the government coffers are followed as such. So, Madam Speaker, with that, I do submit this bill, and I thank my co-author on this, Senator Tina Munya Barnes, in helping in the process. Before we go any further, though, Madam Speaker, I would like to proffer a few amendments. I mean, this bill has been in the works since the 29th Guam Legislature, so it's actually a year and a half old, and finally has its day before this body right now, one term later. But if everybody would turn, I have passed out all the amendments that needed to be made, and they're just minor technical amendments, but significant. The first amendment I'd like to make would be the section 7109, and that's under the definition of unarmed combat defined. Basically, under this amendment, I would just like to add the words after, unarmed combat means boxing, wrestling, and then add the words mixed martial arts, comma, kickboxing, comma, and then it reads on, or any other form of competition in which a blow is usually struck, which may reasonably be expected to inflict injury. So basically, the amendment is to add the words mixed martial arts and kickboxing.
On the amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on the second amendment I'd like to make would be under section 7202, subsection B, and this section reads, recommend to the Commission for Licensing Physicians who are qualified to examine contestants. I would like to add another sentence after that to read, members of the board may serve as ring officials.
On the motion to add, members of the board may serve as ring officials on section 7202B, Senator Spalding, I mean, Senator Ogden, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Just, I guess, for purposes of clarification, if I can ask the mover of the amendment, ring officials can be interpreted as those individuals who are on the sideline, watching this particular event, and are there to serve in that particular capacity? Is that the intent of this amendment?
Senator Spalding.
Or is it ring officials where they are actually, within the ring, the confines of the fighting environment?
Senator Spalding, do you yield to the question?
I'll yield to the question, Madam Speaker. You know, in working with the industry on this one, they're the ones who recommended this. I believe, for most part, it essentially includes those who are inside the ring. In other words, a referee, I would imagine. But again, Senator, if I may, Madam Speaker, I'm not really certain as to the real extent of how far this reaches. You know, one of the things that we do have is we have some board members who are very intricately involved and, you know, are very involved in unarmed combat, and so they might be used as judges and referees.
Actually, Madam Speaker, thank you very much to the good senator who sponsored the amendment. The only reason why I ask is if, in fact, these individuals who are going to be board members are going to be part of the fighting environment internally within the ring, whenever a protest is brought before the board, he or she would have to remove themselves from that particular consideration. And that, I think, if you're looking at the composition of the membership, you're talking about anywhere from, I believe, seven or nine members. Now, we start deleting those individuals, especially professionals such as the physician, from any consideration when it comes to a protest or any questionable activities within the ring. That really is my concern, whether we want to take away from that or allow the board to be able to select or allow individuals who would be ring, internal ring officials who are not necessarily serving in that particular capacity. So I just wanted to share that concern. It's up to the sponsor, if in fact, who would like to consider it even further, but that is really my perspective in terms of supporting or considering this particular amendment. I would hate to see us extracting from the board membership, and then once a protest is filed with the commission itself, that board member would have to arbitrarily or incidentally immediately remove themselves from any consideration of that particular case. So that's a concern that I wanted to share with our colleagues. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Senator Spalding.
Thank you, Senator Ogden. So on the amendment, are there any other speakers? To add on page eight, section 7202B, to add the words, members of the board may serve as ring officials. So on that amendment? No, no, on page? So Senator Panglinen, you're recognized.
Yes, Madam. I think we're getting two things mixed up. We're creating the Guam Wrestling Boxing Mixed Martial Arts Commission, and as part of that, there is a Medical Advisory Commission that advises the Unarmed Combat Commission. And so now you're wanting the Medical Advisory Board to be able to serve as ring officials? I think they're confused. Whoever's making the amendment appears to be talking about the Boxing and Wrestling and Unarmed Combat Commission, and he's making the amendment in the Medical Advisory Board, because that's 7200.
Are you asking, then, basically, the author, the mover of this amendment to clarify?
That's correct, because the explanation for the amendment doesn't match where it's being put.
So would the author then yield?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, actually, there's a good point brought up by Senator Ogden and Senator Panglinen. However, and again, for Senator Panglinen noting that this falls under the Medical Advisory Board, actually, then, what I would like to proffer is that this remain in, because in essence, in terms of the medical board, there usually is a doctor, ringside doctor, who examines, again, whether a fighter is potentially harmed too much, and so I believe that the addition of this language would allow that somebody who sits on the medical board to be able to be the medical doctor at ringside to determine whether a fighter can go on.
Senator Panglinen, did he answer your question?
Again, that's, I still think we're getting that mixed up, because I don't want the same doctor who advises the board to be the one that determines whether that fighter should be able to continue fighting. I really think you've got to separate the two, because, you know, if he's part of the commission, then what ki, I mean, then the, there's a little bit of a conflict between his duty to the commission and his duty to the fighters and so forth. So I would think that you really want two separate doctors, one to advise whether or not, in fact, the way that this is carried out, the injuries that are occurring, because the Medical Advisory Board, if I understand, is to submit to us what changes are needed in the ways that, in the regulations of the fights. Because, you know, if we're getting too many broken arms, then the Medical Advisory Commission tells us in this body that, you know, you're getting too many broken arms, you've got to do something about this, the way they're conducting the fights and so forth. But if he's also a ringside official, or he's also, you know, on the payroll of the fighters, because he's employed to oversee the fights, then there may be, he may say, it's okay, it's just a natural part of the sport. But I want a doctor to tell me that's independent from being involved in the sport, in the operation of the sport, to make a medical determination on the appropriateness of those injuries. I want, it's got to be somebody independent, and I think that's the intent of this Medical Advisory Board, is to take a look at what's happening and the injuries that are occurring and so forth, and should we continue unarmed combat? And if he's the guy that's now being paid to sit at the ringside seats, you know, now he's got his, you know, the guys who are paying him are now, he's going to now advise against and say, close this down, because there's just too many injuries and, you know, there's too much trauma to the head and so forth, and we really shouldn't be licensing this kind of activity in our community, because the dangers are too much. But if he's being paid to work the fights and so forth, then they're not, then they're, you know, there's a harmony of interest versus a checks and balances of the opinions of what's happening within the sport itself. If I understand it correctly, in terms of what this Medical Advisory Board is to do, and it says, prepare and submit to the legislature and the commission reports containing any recommendations for revisions in the law which it deems necessary to protect the health of the contestants in this state, and that probably should be in this territory or on this island rather than state. But, again, you know, you want an independent person that looks at it purely from the medical side and not from the sports side, to make those recommendations to us in this body as to changes that may need to occur. And I think if they're the same person or can be the same person, then there's a conflict of interest.
I'd just like to mention, Senator Panglinen, that it's 7202B as in boy is where the amendment is being proffered, not D.
I understand, but part of the commission's duties is to make those recommendations to us also.
No, just what?
Part of that doctor who's being recommended to sit on the Medical Advisory Board, his, part of his duty is to advise us under D, because he's now a member of the Medical Advisory Board, that he would recommend for the revisions in the law. But if he's sitting there at ringside, you know, being paid by the promoters, is he going to give us a completely independent view of the sport itself and/or the medical aspects of the injuries being suffered, and whether or not we should make some changes? Or is he going to be a little bit, you know, who's his first allegiance to?
A point of information, Madam Speaker?
So that's the question I have.
Please state your point of information.
I understand, and I really do understand the good senator's concern. However, if I just could make a correction on that, the physician would not be paid by the promoter. The commission member, the physician in this case, will be paid by the Unarmed Combat Commission, which falls under the purview of Department of Parks and Recreation. So they're not being paid by the promoter itself, they're being paid through the commission of the unarmed combat, not the Medical Review Commission, but the unarmed combat commission. And again, the other thing here, Madam Speaker, is that I understand his argument, if, well, I guess it's not my turn to speak, I'll reserve that, I'll reserve for later on, Madam Speaker. But again, I just want to, the point of information is that he will not be paid by the promoter.
I think maybe what would be best is that, I'm going to go ahead and call for a brief recess, and I can have you to discuss that.
Yeah, I would like to say that you're sitting on the Medical Advisory Board, can't be a ringside doctor. Right? And the amendment is to make, to allow him to be a ringside doctor. Right? I just don't think you're...
The legislation is back in session, Senator Espaldán.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, in light of the conversation we just had with members of this body, I move to withdraw my motion to amend section 7202B.
On the motion to withdraw, no objections ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Espaldán, you're still recognized.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to make another amendment, which falls under section 7300 subsection D. And to add a new section D, which would say, "The commission shall meet at least quarterly, but may meet as often as the duties of such commission require." Basically, just to make sure that they do meet, at the very least, every three months.
On the motion then to add in new section 7300D as in dog, are there any discussion? Senator Ogden, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I think I stand in full support of the amendment. I think that when you take a look at, just in the last week, week and a half, there has been an event, not too distant from today, where in fact, this particular provision could be applied. So I think it's essential that the unarmed combat commission meet on a quarterly basis so that they can evaluate the sport itself, they can evaluate the individuals who are participating in the sport, and perhaps they can evaluate the overall venues associated with these particular activities. And it's essential that, on a regular basis, in this case, it requires quarterly, at a minimum quarterly, that at least they come back to the table and revisit the entire sport itself and come up with additional amendments or recommendations to enhance it or to make some appropriate changes that may be necessary. So I certainly stand in support of this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the motion then to, for amendment, section 7300D, are there any objections? No objections ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Espaldán, you are...
Yes, Madam Speaker, there's another technical amendment I, or minor amendment I could make, and that'd be under section 7301 subsection C, subsection 2. And basically, to delete the word fingerprints and add the word "police and court clearances." So that the section will read, "Procedures for obtaining police and court clearances pursuant to 7402 to investigate criminal history of all ring officials and employees of the commission and any other applicant the commission wishes to investigate."
On the motion, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, there's also on, under section 7301 subsection D, we would like, I would like to, I move to have it read, "The commission shall approve all contracts between sponsors, licensees, promoters, and contestants."
On the amendment, the commission shall approve all contracts between sponsors, licensees, promoters, and contestants. Senator Titegwe, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I yield to Senator Espaldán to clarify this particular amendment. The way I read it, it shows that it's in total control of all contracts. That means individual fighters, if they choose to be in agreement with the sponsor during these activities and events, can do this free willingly without having the approval of the commission. So according to this amendment, this commission has total control over every contract within the event that it's held, like UOG or whatever venue that it's placed under. And I, could you kind of clarify on this? Because this really holds the commission in total control.
Do the author? The author, do you yield?
Yes, Madam Speaker, and thank you for that question. Again, this is part of the effort to legitimize a sport. I believe in working with the industry itself, they turned over, in terms of trying to how they can, how we can move forward on legitimizing the sport. Again, yes, there is a very strict provision here in terms of having the board approve the contracts. And again, this is to make sure that the fighters, the, in essence, especially the fighters, are, their contracts are above board, that they're not fighting for subpar wages or that they will actually get paid, there is no clauses in there. Because the fighters basically are training to fight as opposed to looking over their contracts and being the legal beagles for themselves. The whole thing here is basic consistency. And this is one of those provisions that, again, was not a personal input from my perspective, was actually suggested by the industry itself.
Senator Titegwe, are you satisfied with the answer? You still have the floor. Can you please make sure your mic is on? Thank you.
Okay. I'm not quite sure what Senator Respeja was giving me, maybe you can clarify on this. But the way I see this, that if this amendment were to go through, that there would be another section on there that would allow the fighters as individual, go into an individual contract with other sponsors or other companies to promote their product without the commission's approval. That, so, it's an amendment, but I would like Senator Respeja to kind of clarify on something else he put on there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think we're getting to that point where I offered some warning to the promoters on this thing of, be better, be careful of what you're asking for, you just might get it, and more. You know, I understand the need to regulate this thing from injury and so forth, but now this provision says that, you know, the promoter must, or the commission must approve all these contracts, sponsors, and so forth. And I really think we're infringing on free enterprise here. If the intention is to make sure that we don't have fighter, that we protect the fighters, then the way to do that is to put in place in law saying what the minimum purse should be, what the minimum requirements are for that fighter, that that fighter must earn a minimum of $750 a fight, that he must have insurance, that he must have et cetera, et cetera, in order for a fight to occur. But if we're going to say, what then is, if the commission is more chummy with one promoter than the other promoter, what's to prevent the commission from saying, you know, "We're going to allow your fighters to fight for $500, or maybe $200, and all the other promoters, we're going to require them to pay $1,000." So that you're now the only one able to kind of sign up fighters or at least have fights because all the others can't do it in that, you know, with a profit. And I know it kind of seems a little weird, but that's really why you have this huge regulation on the Boxing Commission across the country, because they are known for this. That's why you have promoters that have gone to jail and things like that. So the other thing is, we now have a promoter who has other business enterprises or who has connections with other business enterprises who want to sponsor this. And the promoter now is able to get a sponsor to kick in, you know, $20,000. But other promoters aren't able to do that. And let's say they come in with a contract for a $10,000 sponsorship fee. The commission can say, "We're not going to approve that $10,000 sponsorship fee. We're going to require that, you know, you pay a $30,000 sponsorship fee because..." Whatever. So it really is, as my good colleague pointed out, kind of far-reaching that we're approving the contracts. Now, you know, maybe that the intent is we're not approving the terms and conditions on the contract, just that the contract is legal and binding and we're approving it as to form. Maybe that's what the intent here is, but the way it's written, it may be much more far-reaching than that. And so I would have, even though I would like it, because, but I would like to, you know, if we're going to go this, then we should tell the commission what should be contained in those contracts, what are the minimums and so forth, so that everybody's on the same playing field. Everybody's even when it comes to bringing fighters and signing them up and so forth, that one is not able to get a lower purse approved and therefore increases profits. And you're going to say, "Well, maybe he just won't fight for that." But if there's nobody else going to be able to bring fights because they keep disapproving their contracts, you know, and there's collusion, then that's what you're going to get. So again, I understand, I think I understand the intent, but I can also see that the way it's proposed, it really allows for these, you know, I mean, just collusion to occur between sponsors, fighters, you know, promoters and so forth, and somebody gets frozen out and somebody survives, somebody doesn't. And the way that this is written, I think, makes that a real possibility and a probability. And therefore, absent any other clarification, I oppose the amendment.
Thank you, Senator Panglinen. Are there any other speakers on the amendment?
Madam Speaker, before you acknowledge, if I may, this is the beauty of the process. I mean, the, you know, the legislative process in terms of sharing the thoughts and whatnot. And I believe that the contributions of both Senator Titegwe and Senator Panglinen are pretty much on point. And I looked at it again and saw the changes that were being made and listened to the concerns, and I believe they're right. So I moved withdraw this amendment at this point in time, Madam Speaker.
So on the motion to withdraw, no objections ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, if I may.
Yes, please.
And the last amendment, Madam Speaker, is just another small amendment. That would be under section 7402 subsection D, subsection 2. And basically, to, it would, this section will now read, "Any other applicant the commission wishes to investigate shall submit to the commission with the application a police and court clearance." Basically, we delete fingerprints, and instead of fingerprints, we basically require police and court clearance.
One moment, I'm trying to find the section.
Sorry, Madam Speaker.
So it's on page... Page 12?
Page 12, Madam Speaker.
Page 12, and it's line, let me see, line 30?
Section D to line 30, Madam Speaker.
Okay.
Oh, wait. Madam Speaker, there may be a discrepancy, I'm sorry.
It can't be, right, because D, line 28D, that's stricken out.
Yes, Madam Speaker. Could I have 30 seconds, Madam Speaker?
Okay. We're taking a minute recess.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's the wrong.
The legislation is back in session, Senator Espaldán.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm sorry, there was a typo, and it should be section 7402 subsection C2. And so I'm just moving to amend that section to read, "Any other applicant the commission wishes to investigate shall submit to the commission with the application a police and court clearance."
On the amendment, are there any speakers? No objections, so ordered.
And that's it. And I'm just asking for more, for my colleagues to please take a serious look at this. I believe that there are some real opportunities in terms of growing this sport, but again, we need to grow it properly, and I believe that this bill is a good step in the right direction. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Espaldán. On the main, on the motion as amended, Senator Espaldán, you're recognized. I mean, I'm sorry, Senator Palacios, I'm sorry.
This is on the main bill?
Yes.
Madam Speaker, of course, I rise in support of the bill itself. I attended the first public hearing of this bill in the last term, and I think it's about time. I however would like to offer, and I just a simple amendment, on page 19. Page 19, line 27, under insurance for licensed contestants. I would like, Madam Speaker, to substitute the word "may," which "shall," the commission "shall," by regulation require. And the reason being that from permissive to mandatory, this has always been a problem with some of the fighters, and even though they don't complain much about this, it is my understanding that an emergency visit to the ER costs at least $1,000, a little bit more, just for one night. And a lot of times, they ended up on a deficit, meaning they lost their purse, the purse that they got just to pay for medical. I believe that the onus should not be placed on the contestant, whether he would want to be covered by medical insurance or not. And I think that it should be automatic, that when the contestant is accepted to participate in a contest, that automatically he'd be covered by some kind of medical insurance for injuries sustained during the combat. Now, the word "may" is very permissive, and again, without the word "shall," there is always this coercive element, that perhaps the potential contestant may hesitate to actually claim to be covered for some kind of medical insurance. Who would not want to be covered by medical insurance? So if the promoter would ask, "Would you want medical insurance or not?", of course the contestant would have to weigh, "Well, if I say yes, probably I would not be an attractive candidate for a contest." I think we should place the burden on the promoter and not the contestant. And the word, so, I would like my colleagues to support the amendment and substitute the word "may," the commission "may," substitute the word with "shall." The commission "shall," by regulation, require insurance coverage for each licensed contestant to provide for medical, surgical, and hospital care for injuries sustained while engaged in contests or exhibition of unarmed combat, in an amount of $50,000 or more payable to the physician and so forth. So that that way, the burden of having to pay medical expenses would not be on the family of the contestant. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the Palacios amendment, are there any objections? Senator Rector, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and welcome back.
Thank you.
Yes, I would, I would like to make an amendment to the amendment, if I may.
On the same section?
On the same section, exactly the same thing. I was actually working on this, myself and the maker of the amendment, thinking similar ways. And the new amendment, as it's being passed out, the amendment to the amendment, not only does it say "shall," but insert the word "medical," as you can see in the way I've written, and basically inserts the word "medical" in front of "insurance," and then ups the fee of no less than $1 million. And then also requires, add a new section that would require accidental and disability insurance for each licensed, accidental death and disability insurance for each licensed contestant, an amount of not less than $1 million to be paid to the contestant or his beneficiary within 30 calendar days of the time of the incident. And then also, lastly, to delete the additional section that waives this requirement for nonprofit organizations to sponsor these contests.
Yes, I was going to say that, yes. I was just, yes. I was going to, we're going to have to divide this, so that, we need to address the "shall" from "may" to "shall" first, and let's move that, then you can be able to add on yours.
Not a problem. In that case, I stand in favor of the word "shall."
Okay, thank you. Okay, so on the motion then, from the Palacios amendment, from "may" to "shall," are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Okay, Senator then Rector, you're recognized on your amendment.
Therefore, thank you again for recognizing me, Madam Speaker. Then I procure the following...
Yes, I mean, he finished, and his amendment passed?
It passed.
It went from "may to shall."
Yes. Now, therefore, my amendment now, well, I guess it already says "shall," so if we'll take into account the underlying part, so it no longer needs to be underlying. So, I procure the following amendment as written, and I already spoke about it.
So, on the Rector amendment, Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Hold on, I, okay, never mind.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, did you still want to speak?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I actually did want to speak on the amendment, I just haven't, I've already talked about what the amendment was, I just haven't spoken on it yet.
Okay, so, please, then, continue, I'm sorry.
Oh, and I'm sorry for not making that clear when I spoke. Yeah, you know, the problem is, is $50,000 doesn't buy you a whole heck of a lot of health care. If, this is a very dangerous sport. If anybody's ever watched one of these sports, it's quite easily for someone to be seriously injured, to be permanently injured, and in the sport, there have been known to be deaths from time to time. It is a dangerous sport. Now, that being said, we wanna make sure that these fighters are covered and not disabled for life. If someone has all their ligaments ripped out of their knee, or their shoulder, or their elbow, right, this is gonna take a long recuperative period, which I don't think $50,000 will pay for. And so, henceforth, it's, we need to make sure that these young men and women have the proper amount of medical coverage, so if they get injured in one of these matches that are for-profit matches, and generally make a lot of money for the people that put on these type of contests, that they are covered, and their families are covered. If a young man or young woman loses their life in the ring, who's gonna take care of their family? Who's gonna make sure that the bills are paid so their wife and children aren't kicked out on the street? Who's gonna make sure that their income from their regular jobs isn't coming into their family's budget anymore? Who's gonna replace that money? Right? This is a seriously dangerous sport, and I think we need to make sure, and I know other states and around the country have mandatory insurance laws just like this for all of these contests, and I think it's important that we treat these fighters and their families with the same kind of respect and give them the insurance they need so that they aren't endangered and their families aren't in danger. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I can appreciate and I understand where the mover of this amendment concerned with the health and the welfare of the fighter and their families should something occur, but I think I need to remind the body too as well that we're not just talking about one particular sport. This is a, this bill basically establishes to amend an existing commission, and, you know, other than mixed martial arts, it has, and kickboxing, it has boxing and wrestling. And to characterize other sports that are being regulated by, are going to be regulated by this commission, or are being regulated by this commission, as just as dangerous as the other, is clearly a misrepresentation. I fear as well too, that said, that there, I think that before we can start to move on an amendment like this, we gotta recognize and understand what the ramifications are with regards to a $1 million policy. In a prior life, Madam Speaker, I used to sell insurance, and anytime you get up to into that range, you're talking about an exorbitant amount, whether it be for a promoter, an individual fighter, or in some case, you know, a wrestler. And so, I'm literally, although I recognize and I can appreciate his concern, based on what this will require of the other sports, of the other type of activities that are being regulated by this commission, I have to, I have to object to this amendment. Thank you.
On the amendment, are there any other speakers? Senator Panglinen, you're recognized.
I love being able to say "I told you so." But it really is, Madam Speaker, I mean, you know, insurance premium, and what you charge for it is based on probability. And the probability and the possibility of injury in this type of sport is high, there's no question. So, therefore, the premium on this is going to be very, very high. And so, there, if you were going to require somebody for each match and each fighter to provide, basically, you're gonna require them to provide insurance almost for not just a million dollars for every event, you're probably gonna require them for every match. And there can be 10 matches in an evening. So, I just think that what this does basically is it's going to put the cost of this to be extremely high, and therefore, the likelihood of matches occurring will become very rare or only to those promoters who are able to subsidize things, the cost of the operation from other venues and so forth. And so, while I can see what the intention is and certainly agree with it, the effect would be that we're just gonna say, you know, "We just can't have this kind of activity in our community." Maybe that's really the debate we should be having, you know, as are many debates going on across the country. Is this the type of activity that you want? If you take a look at one section of the bill, it says that this, where the objective is to inflict injury, that's in the definition. That's what an unarmed combat event or match means, where the intention is to inflict injury. And do we want to sanction events in our community where we put two guys there and says, "Your objective is to injure the other guy"? You know? Is that what we want? And I think those are the questions we have, and certainly I have, as I wrestle, no pun intended, wrestle with whether or not this thing should go, and in terms of sanctioning activities like this, where we know and we say, "Go into that ring and, you know, you can reasonably expect that the other guy's objective is to inflict injury on you, not to score points, not to show you a move, not to do anything, but you can reasonably expect that his intention is to inflict injury upon you." And do we want that? I don't know. That's a question we have. That's, to me, that's the most fundamental question I have with regards to this and the regulation of it, and, not the regulation, but the sanctioning of this type of matches and so forth. But, you know, absent all that, we need some kind of regulation, and I think that, you know, if maybe the author would just, I'd just ask him a question. What could he reasonably, with any kind of accuracy and knowledge, tell us, what's the cost of that premium? And maybe the question is, does he care what it is? You know? But if the author would kinda just yield to the question, what could, what is the guess estimate on the premium of $1 million as required for the match, for hospitalization and medical care, and the $1 million premium for the accidental injury and death? What would be the cost of those premiums for an event?
Does the author yield to the question?
Certainly. Yeah, it's a good question. Most medical plans have a $1 million cap on them, most health insurance plans, so I suppose any of us could look at our health insurance plans that are currently in place and figure out what they cost. Now, the interesting thing about it is, most health insurance plans have an exemption for being in this type of contest. So, even if one of these contestants have health insurance, I don't think it'll cover them. So, I'm not quite sure what the cost is on the plan, or, and for the accidental death and dismemberment, those plans are usually fairly reasonable. But once again, I am not specifically familiar with...
Can we provide like a five-minute recess while he finds out? I would like to know before I vote on the amendment.
We're gonna take then a few minutes recess so that we can get some answers.
What sort of a light question?
I thought you'd like to... Light question, what's the vote?
For your next vote, you can say something.
I understand, you know, I can understand, and I think I'll hold back with my attention. Okay?
No, it's basically to cover any medical injury they suffer doing that match.
So, that's the thing that I wanted to like, question first, medical art, and then they don't just vote on the bottom.
It's redundant almost.
And so, the second one is for a flag. I'm serious, it's a flag. Chris, look at it. And this is a duty flag.
For $50 insurance.
But I remember, now, this is not just...
This is a special event, we're not just talking about regular...
Well, because you're talking pretty bad.
Don't know more than that.
Now, if the same passes, I wanna go back to selling insurance. I don't think, I see there's like insurance for most of these events, they should be happening.
Okay, I'm ready.
No.
Okay. Okay. I wanted your second sponsor up.
Move back on that section.
I think so.
Hey, call me when you get the answers.
I can say your address.
Any answers?
She asked me to come on today.
Okay guys, it's about the whole airport, okay, don't forget.
Was the number three brown?
Yep. My deal's over, okay guys? My deal's a simple one, no discussion.
Julie, let's keep going. Let's talk to the next bill.
Okay, do we have answers?
Let's come back to the bill. Let's come back again.
What is this one?
I want to sit next to you.
Insurance for holding one. Million dollars. For a hundred thousand dollars on holding one. And the probability of a holding one is like one in ten thousand compared to getting- Compared to the addictive-
Let's keep going.
I know, I know.
What the bitch?
It's not a quote, but she was saying in the comments her, she was saying that- The parents who were coughing and shivering and crying, they were saying that they had to have their others.
If you go to my yard, everyone there can be seen.
I'm going to go down there.
Who was your partner?
Hello ma'am, can I borrow your quarter of a inch? Yeah, so because you put, you put, oh get here, and then you put Frank on the other side. I'll move past Frank. Oh, okay.
Okay guys, we have no answer and we want to reject that five. We want to get the airport. I can get two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Can I be there?
I have here, I still have my meetings, I want to ask you a question. I'm asking for insurance and I want to- So. Now will you give another mandate? You told us to give another mandate.
He told us another mandate?
Yeah, no, I did your offer, I speak on other mandates.
Have you spoken on-
Yes.
Not, not bill?
Why do you have to give another mandate?
No, you have to go on. I didn't say, yeah.
I'm on the main bill. And then at the end, you keep giving names, you know. For all people named Neil now.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay guys, we're going in, we're gonna, uh, wait, the whole day, I don't think we're gonna get any. We can't, I can't, um, we're gonna be shut down today, is anyone? I know, we, that's, like, it's not going to respond to the end question. Uh, and then, and we get, no, we just need to, uh, actually, uh, one of the, uh, you know. You're right, I, I, we're about to ask, but that's, you know, difficult, uh. Uh, what? No, it, it's not, it's, we, not, uh, we're not, uh, we're not, uh, we're not going right up. Alright guys, going in.
The legislature is back in session. Before we took a recess, Senator Panglinen had asked a question of, uh, the mover of the amendment. Senator Rector, do you have any information to provide?
Yes ma'am chair, thank you so much. After a quick perusal of the internet, I came to the, to the International Sports Combat Federation's website, where they, uh, they say that the International Sports Combat Federation recommends that every promoter has this type of health insurance for their fighters. And they have a standard rate package down here. So when I looked at it, it comes up to covering ten bouts, which is twenty fighters, with fifty thousand dollars worth of health insurance for that bout, with a five hundred dollar deductible, will cost a promoter a grand total of four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Now, whether that's applicable to Guam or not applicable to Guam, I, I couldn't tell you. And that's with a, um, a five hundred dollar deductible. Now, now realistically, when you, when you look at it, how many of these young people have fifty thousand dollars in their pocket? Well, point of information, I clarified, that's the insurance information I got, thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Panglinen, were you satisfied with the response?
Well, yeah, but I'm asking, the amendment is for a million dollars, so what does that mean?
Senator, uh, Rector then?
Do we just multiply that by twenty? So that, the insurance premium for a million dollars for an event would be forty thousand? For one event, is that what that means?
Senator Rector, do you have a response? Do you, do you, you two respond to this, uh, the senator's question?
You, you got what I got. That's, uh, what can you do? I, it's, that's the information I was able to pull up, thank you.
Thank you. As, as Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Situus, uh, maasim, ma'am speaker. Just based on that inquiry when we were on recess, uh, just placed a call to one of the insurance companies here and asked what it would be for a million dollar coverage, uh, on an event that's probably a, a one-day event or a weekend event, what it would cost. The, uh, the individual had noted back to me that there was, uh, quite some difficulty in trying to secure, um, a million dollar coverage for a fighting event. But is it possible, yes, on any other standard event that could happen, especially here on Guam, and that has happened in the past, would run anywhere between a thousand to one thousand, five hundred for a one-day event. So if that would, uh, make, uh, for any notion or any, um, questions answered, uh, that was one of the responses that were provided this way. Thank you.
Uh, th- thank you for that information, Senator Munia Barnes.
Madam Chair, if I might, I just got some new information on this.
Okay, can you, go ahead, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. Sorry about the delay, my office just emailed me, they got an estimate from NAMBO's Insurance here on Guam, that for four thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars a month, they can give a million dollars worth of medical and dental coverage, uh, for a group for ten fighters. So for an entire month, not just one night, but for an entire month, they can cover, uh, ten fighters for four thousand, four hundred dollars a month. For a million dollars coverage.
Hey, thank you very much. I can see, um, some of their, your minds are already doing the calculations. Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you ma'am speaker, and I appreciate the opportunity. I thi- this is basically, point of information, I think that we've gotta be very careful here. There are a number of different factors that, that, uh, that play into, uh, basically setting up, uh, you know, rate structures for policies. One is the type of event, secondly is pre-existing conditions. You know, so not one, not one individual, you know, not every individual fits one mold. And with regards to, if the, with regards to the information that has just been provided, I guess, uh, would like to know the provider that information would yield to find out whether or not this was, in fact, for a million dollar coverage?
Uh, you're addressing the question to the?
Per fighter, yes.
Okay, uh, Senator Rector, do you yield?
Million dollars per fighter, per fighter.
Yes, a million dollar coverage per fighter for ten fighters for an entire month, medical and dentalist, four thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars a month.
Okay. I, 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 again, I, I get concerned here ma'am, with regards to, again, not, every mold, one mold fits every, every individual. We have to recognize that some of these individuals are, are, are not residents, are not citizens of Guam. You may, we, you may have an event where you've got international recognition. You've got individuals that, uh, are from, from, from other places that may not necessarily be covered under certain clauses of insurance. I, I ventured to say too, that it's very difficult to find, uh, a insurance policy that recognizes that the reason, the reason why you're gonna get this is because you're going to be engaged in a event and an activity where the probability of you actually using this, using the, the coverage is highly likely. If you to look at your coverage plan, whether it be your health insurance, or your medical insurance, or even your home insurance, there are certain clauses that basically state that you're, they are not, not responsible for those events that you willingly participate in, recognizing that you could either lose property or lose limb, or lose life. So, I'm, I'm a little weary about that ma'am. I, I, again, I, I think this is something that maybe, I, I, I wanna, again, recognize the concern, brought on by, by, by the mover of the amendment. I just think that this is something that needs to be, uh, looked in a little bit further. Uh, because this actually has more ramifications than, 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 than we see at the surface. And I don't know whether it is going to be advisable, I, I, I agree with, you know, I mean, I agree with, with the good senator from, from, from Baragada, be careful with what you ask for. Because, uh, this is what, this is the road we're going down. And I just, I don't wanna make it so that, you know, this is something that, that fits a Greco-Roman wrestler, or that is required of a Greco-Roman wrestler. Um, or, you know, a, a, a simple wrestling match as opposed to a, a big-time promoted event such as, uh, mixed martial arts. Thank you.
Thank you for that information. As Senator Panglinen, you're still, you still have the floor.
I think I had the floor.
Yes, you do.
You know, ma'am speaker, I, I certainly, um, you know, I agree with the intent, and I think that what we wanted to do with the, with that section was to ensure that, uh, these promoters and the fighters, the healthcare they get, they go to the hospital that somebody pays for that. Because if they don't, then the hospital and the people of Guam get stuck with the bill. Uh, because they go in, they either don't have the money to pay, you know, I mean, the emergency room charge without any attendant, uh, supplies, uh, x-rays, other charges, just the ER room charge, I think is somewhere between twelve hundred dollars, nine hundred and twelve hundred dollars. What, you see a doctor, that's an extra professional services fee charge, et cetera, et cetera. You get an x-ray, uh, you get some blood drawn, all of that are added on to the emergency room fee charge. So we don't want the hospital paying for that, and so forth. So I think the, uh, the original proposal of requiring that up to fifty thousand, if, if the information is correct in that ten fighters can get a million dollar coverage, you know, for four thousand a month, then maybe we should put everybody under that plan that's a Gov-Guam employee. Because right now, a family, uh, that gets a hundred thousand dollar coverage under the Gov-Guam Health Insurance Program with a fifteen hundred dollar deductible, or, and it's, or a six thousand, five thousand, three thousand dollar deductible, is paying fifteen hundred bucks a month for just one family. So I can't see the, the rationale or the relationship, and maybe it's just depends, it depends on the quote that we're getting and, and how that's structured, but I, I don't see the relationships. You know, I understand what we're trying to do here, and I understand, uh, the, the intent and so forth. And I guess, you know, we're just gonna have to decide which way we're gonna go. Uh, are we trying to, uh, work with this organization in terms of providing them a regulated pla- area in which they can function? Uh, continue their businesses, if that's our intent? Because we think this type of business activity, because this is a business, and we wanna sanction this type of business activity and put this kind of requirements on that. Uh, or are we, and, and the main objective is the protection of the combatants in this case, to ensure that they get the medical care, they get the disability care, they get the, uh, death benefit should something, you know, horrifically unfortunate happen to them in terms of either suffering death or permanent disability. Uh, and we all wanna do that, we all wanna, wanna provide that kind of protection. Uh, but there's also some free will here in terms of the individuals making the decision to enter into this kind of field of work now, because they are working for the promoter by, uh, by, uh, deciding to fight and train, uh, and, and engage in this type of, uh, business activity. Uh, and so if our intention is to assist these companies, uh, that are promoting these events, uh, and at the same time balancing that with the protection of the individuals, uh, combatants, then this may not be the way to do that. And if our, you know, and, and for me, it's not the way to do it, I'd, I'd vote for it, why not? But again, I told those guys, be careful what you ask for, 'cause this is what you're gonna get. Uh, but if it's a, a purity of choice of, you know, do I want the fighters protected? I absolutely do, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. Uh, Senator Palacios, on the amendment?
No, no, just a point of review later.
Okay. Okay, are there any other speakers on the, on the amendment? Senator Espardan, you're recognized.
Thank you ma'am speaker. Um, ma'am speaker, I understand the concerns of, uh, the mover of the amendment. However, we're talking about medical insurance in case a fire, fighter or combatant goes into the ring a certain night, on a, on a certain night, gets injured, and knowing full well that there, that possibility exists, but because, and if it does exist, then, and it does happen, then he would need some kind of medical treatment. And so, again, would that amount to one million dollars on that one singular fight? I don't know, probably not. But again, right now, what, what, what is there right now? Right now, there is a waiver form that basically asks, that, where the fighters go in and they waive any, any kind of liability, uh, responsibility on the promoters or anybody else. So this fifty thousand dollars, as it's written right now, is definitely a lot more than what, uh, they're getting right now. When you start talking about a million dollar coverage, again, I, I believe the quote that the mover of the amendment put out there was that for forty-two hundred dollars, forty-two hundred, fifty dollars, that will cover ten events, in others, in essence, twenty fighters, at a maximum of fifty thousand each. Now, if we start talking about a million dollars each, again, this was a concern of, uh, the previous speaker, oh, do we just multiply that four thousand, two hundred, fifty dollars by twenty, you know, to reflect that? We don't know that. We don't know that. But at least this is a point where, is a starting point, and we can always return to increase that amount uh, at a certain point in time. But right now, fifty thousand seems to be enough to cover any injury that might be sustained in the ring on one particular night. We're not, we're not talking for, for, you know, for the whole duration. Um, the other thing is, again, the, the previous speaker pointed out, these combatants go in with free will, knowing full well that the propensity to get hurt is definitely there, and they probably will get hurt, even if they win. Um, again, are we gonna impose a million dollar, uh, insurance premium just, uh, insurance, uh, coverage with a very high premium just for that one event? And sometimes these events last thirty seconds. Uh, I don't know. But I think, I think that at this point in time, I would have to object to the million dollar coverage uh, until we get better information. We know what the, we know what the coverage is at fifty thousand dollars. It's four thousand, two hundred, fifty dollars, at least, according to the website that was visited by the author. And it's spread among ten fights, in other, in essence, twenty fighters. So that seems be with, to be within reason. I think if you start getting into the forty to fifty to sixty thousand dollar coverage for one night, that may basically then, uh, kill the industry on this island. So I, I object to this amendment. Thank you ma'am speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Espardan. Are there any speakers on the Rector amendment? There being none, okay, I'm going to then go ahead and call for, uh, the question. I had in, oh, I'm sorry, to close, you're right, I'm so terribly sorry. Senator Rector, you are recognized to close.
Thank you ma'am chair. You know, that's, once again, the beauty of the legislative process, is we get to work through some of these issues and, and talk about some of these ideas, and there's a lot of smart people in this room that figure stuff out. But I wanna go back to talking about this issue of free will. Look, if you're a professional athlete and you're getting in the ring to do a job and get paid for that job by an employer, who is the promoter of this event, right? You are in essence a worker. Now, every worker on this island is covered by labor laws that protect them. For instance, if you're working at a dangerous site, we have OSHA requirements that say, you have to wear safety shoes, you have to wear steel-toed boots, you have to have a helmet, you have to have a safety harness, you have to have everything possible to protect you. And then, even if you do get injured on the job, you've got disability insurance with the, with the form of, um, occupa- occupational injury insurance, which every employer has to have on Guam. How is it any different for these kids? It, how, how can we allow them, how can we even possibly contemplate saying that you can waive the rights that people have fought and died for to win for you over the years as a worker on this island, and you can sign a piece of paper and waive away that, those rights and those protections that should have? That's just unacceptable to me. I have met lots of these young fighters, and they're good, hard-working athletes, and young family men and family women, and, uh, I can't possibly, in good conscience, agree to anything that would allow them to waive the ability to take care of their family. To waive the ability to be, to have healthcare if they get injured on the job, which is very likely, as everybody's pointed out in this, in this type of endeavor. So that's very important. And another one of the speakers brought up another excellent point, that what do we do for these kids that get paid a thousand dollars for going to this match, and they get injured on the job and have to go to our, our emergency room and have no more money to pay for that? Well, who ends up footing that bill, ma'am speaker? Take a look in the mirror, sister, it's you and me and every other taxpayer on Guam. 'Cause they end up falling into the category, just like seventy-four percent of the people that go to our hospital now, of not being able to pay their hospital bills. So once again, we see the downward s- struggle to fund our healthcare system, and basically, the people that are profiting from this work adventure, which are the promoters of this ring, wash their hands of the liability. They're like, look, we'll make the money, but if there's any problem, we don't have to pay. We'll pass that burden on to the people of Guam. Well, once again, that's not fair. And someone, another speaker mentioned the fact that, what if they're from a different country? And they get hurt? How are we gonna get insurance for them then? Well, that's a very good point, right? Because if we have a fighter from Japan, which I noticed in the last match, we had fighters come in from Japan, if they get disabled, or they have a long time, long-term treatment that they have to take, guess what they're gonna do? They're gonna go back to Japan where they have national healthcare, and it's gonna cost that fighter a cent. So the Japanese fighters have a significant advantage over, over the, the Guam fighters. If they get hurt on the job, their government takes care of them. But if our people get hurt on the job, our government's not gonna ensure that they're taken care of? Once again, that, that doesn't sit right with me, ma'am speaker. Once again, that doesn't sit right with me, Madam Speaker. And lastly, when talking to the issue of fifty thousand dollars, you know, when I think of it, I've gone to a couple of these matches, they're quite entertaining. You know, I watched a championship match once that lasted, like somebody said, less than thirty seconds. I think it lasted all of three seconds. The bell rang, the guy ran across the ring and the guy got whacked in the head by somebody else's knee, knocked him out cold. Sort of like whiplash. Because if it's, if you take that big a blow to your forehead, which is what happened in this case, you know your head, the back of your head almost touched your back at that point. And now, when you think about an injury like that, it reminds me of my colleague that just got back from the Philippines after having spinal surgery on her neck. I wonder if that costs less than fifty thousand dollars? I don't know. But I have a sneaky suspicion it costs a little bit more than that to the insurance company. And if she were to get the treatment in the U.S. or in Hawaii, I think it might have cost more than that. You know, the trick is for this, is the people of Guam shouldn't have to bear the burden of for-profit companies endeavors in this instance. Two, we shouldn't be able to endanger our workers and/or fighters and citizens to go into a job where they can possibly, quite possibly, get injured and take away their ability to provide for their family. Because once again, who's gonna end up paying for that? Well, look in the mirror, brothers and sisters, it's gonna be the people, the taxpayers of Guam. Because if you can't take care of your family, then we're gonna get you Section Eight housing. Now, we should do that. And we're gonna hire housing, we're gonna be on the medical energy plan, we're gonna get you food stamps. All good, but wouldn't we rather make sure that these workers are covered? That when they risk their life to make money for someone else, that they at least have health insurance coverage? Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Rector. Yes, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We're talking about two separate issues here on items one and two, and I move that we divide the question.
Okay. Yes, I was going to, thank you very much, but you're right, we need to divide the, on the amendment, there's seven, four, one, four, there's a one and two, so we're going to divide the question on first amendment. On that amendment, are there any objections to one? There is an objection. Okay, I'm going to call then for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion failed. Amendment failed. Okay, number two, Senator Rector, do you want to talk about number two? Which require an accidental death and disability? Because I divided the question here.
Can you divide it in three parts or just three parts?
No, just one and two.
Certainly, on the second part. The first part asked for health insurance, which obviously, I guess the people of Guam are gonna pay for at this point. And the second part asked for accidental death and disability insurance. Now, this insurance is usually fairly inexpensive. Now, of course, I don't have a number in front of me, and I know you guys want a number on it, but it is generally fairly inexpensive. But once again, this goes back to the exact same question. If this young man or young woman gets in a position where they can no longer provide for their family, if they get into the ring and they get knocked in the head and it paralyzes them from the neck down, who's gonna take care of this fighter's family? Who's gonna take care of the fighter? Who's gonna pay that bill, Madam Speaker? Well, it's gonna be the people of Guam currently. And that's just not right. This is a for-profit, on-the-job injury. The company that's providing this job needs to take up their fair share and cover this bit of insurance. Thank you.
Senator Respechio.
Yeah, another point of order, sorry, the gentleman's correct, there's three items here. On the third item, it would strike out the last sentence of that section.
Oh, the strikeout, okay, thank you.
So divide the question into three parts.
Yes, so we're going to do then number two. So on that amendment, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, so the third is the strikeout. Senator Rector, do you want to address that as well or do you want to vote?
Thank you very much. Yeah, the strikeout event kinda worried me a little bit because basically, this was language that was added to the bill currently. And basically, it says that if there's a nonprofit organization conducting these fights, then it allows them to waive the top two provisions. And once again, that doesn't really work out for me. It's one thing if it's a nonprofit sanctioned events where they're not paying fighters, they aren't professional fighters. If it's an amateur event, that's one thing. But an event created by a nonprofit organization, that really doesn't cut it. It's kinda like gambling for nonprofit organizations. These fighters are still endangered, their lives are still in jeopardy, and their ability to take care of their families is still in jeopardy. And henceforth, it is almost critical, in my opinion, for any time they get in the ring in a professional capacity, they are working, no matter whether they're working for a nonprofit organization or they're working for a for-profit organization, they still should be covered by the same protections. Henceforth, that's why I knocked it out. Just like the people that work for Guma Mami, right, are covered by the same labor laws as the people that work for AK. There's no difference. When you're a worker, you're a worker no matter who you work for, and this is a good point on that. Thank you very much.
On the motion to amend, to strike out, then, the last sentence from page nineteen and continues on to page twenty. Okay, let me get your names. I have Blas. Keep your hands up, please, so I can make sure. Palacios and Panglinen. Okay, so Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, again, you know, I recognize that, you know, there's a concern here with regards to how, for MMA fighting. But we've gotta recognize that this bill is also, is for a commission that covers more than just MMA fighting. And there are other events, such as wrestling events, Greco-Roman wrestling events. What about the high school events? You know, or events sponsored by local clubs for exhibition? We've gotta be very mindful and very careful that, again, this amendment has a far-reaching effect other than just MMA events. And I've got some concerns with this, therefore, again, I have to raise my objection.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the amendment. It does not matter, Madam Speaker, on what condition a fighter engages in a contest. The focal point should be in ensuring that the contestant, when injured, will have coverage. It does not matter that the organization is nonprofit or is just for fun, because the hospital does not recognize that when it provides the service. It will bill you. It does not matter that you didn't get paid, that you performed it as a donation or as a charity event. And I rise in support of striking that out and have the contestant covered in the same way. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen, on the amendment to strike out.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this is something, of course, that I had recognized and had discussed with the author as a concern I had. And that is just, it's along the same lines of the presentations made. You know, you have a lot of nonprofit organizations that are being, where their status is being used by for-profit organizations. And so, this amendment really would ensure that we're looking at professional events and so forth, and if there was any distinction to be made, it would be amateur versus a professional event. And so you can have nonprofit organizations sponsor professional events, and therefore, these fighters will be, will receive purses, will put their best faith effort in terms of giving the audience a good match, and the risk of injury and everything else remains the same. So I say that, and I support the striking out of this amendment, because the distinction, as the good Senator has pointed in the retiring speaker, is the fighter and not the sponsor. So if the fighter is in there and he's getting paid for working, then he needs the protection of the law for the job that he's doing, and therefore, I stand in support of this amendment.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers on the amendment? Senator Rector, would you like to close? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Senator Espada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I understand, and you're right, the consequences would be the same whether, and this is basically, on this issue, it's a nonprofit organization and the potential of it being used almost as a front for a profit, a for-profit organization remains. And I think that's the concern with this. However, I would like to make an amendment to the amendment, and instead of striking the whole thing, have this, this section to read, "Any unarmed combat organization who conducts amateur or exhibition contests shall be excluded from this provision, provided that the organization waiver is signed by the contestant or by legal guardian if under age eighteen." And again, this is basically to acknowledge the fact that this commission oversees a lot of amateur functions, amateur contests as well. I mean, one of the things that's being promoted now is the amateur boxing contests, in which, again, they wear, they wear headgear, they have heavier gloves, and, you know, as opposed to the mixed martial arts. You also have judo contests, where really, it's more of a throw than it is any kind of blow. And they're not really professionals who are fighting for money, they're basically doing an exhibition fight. So the distinction here in terms of opposing the deletion of this whole section is to amend it to reflect that indeed, the distinction has been made, that there are professional fights, and then there are amateur fights and exhibition fights, in which you have high school kids in wrestling matches who, again, and these matches are watched very carefully because of their amateur status, that, you know, it only takes a tap-out to, you know, to stop the fight, or, you know, even, or if it's amateur boxing, it only takes the corner man to throw in the towel and it's over. So I've moved to amend this amendment, and instead of striking this whole section, have the amendment read, "Any unarmed combat organization who conducts amateur or exhibition contests shall be excluded from this provision, provided that the organization waiver is signed by the contestant or by legal guardian if under age eighteen." Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Espada. I'm going to take a minute recess, and I'd like to have you take your attention to page twenty-four, okay, in Article Five. A short recess.
Madam Speaker, in light of the section, oh, sorry.
We're back in session. Senator Espada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In light of the section seven, five, zero, zero, I withdraw my amendment to the amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Espada. So there's no objection to the withdrawal? It's ordered. So we're back to the original, I mean, the rector amendment then to strike out. Are there any other speakers? Okay, so Senator Rector, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, you know, this was, once again, a really excellent effort on flushing out things in the bill. But look, at the end of the day, we have to always remember that the focus can't be on the industry, the focus can't be on the profitability of a company, the focus can be on, on creating this new entity on Guam, the focus has to be on our people and our families. The focus has to be on whether we're gonna take care of our people and our families, whether we're gonna ensure that, no matter what job someone takes, that if they get injured on the job, they're gonna be covered and their families are gonna be covered. That's what we have to think about, right? Whether the head of household is gonna be able to take care of their kids the next day, and if they can't, who's gonna cover that bill? I think this is a really good amendment. No matter who you work for, you have to be treated with the dignity and respect you deserve. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, which is the very last paragraph there, to strike out, although, since there was an objection, I'd like to call then for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Is everybody in? Who's supposed to want to vote? One, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So we're done with, Senator Rector, you have no other amendment? So, did you, you're done? Okay. So, let me see, on the, a point of inquiry, Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
I would like to ask the author, I was here on, on the same section, on insurance for licensed contestants, of course, starting with line twenty-seven. I don't know whether I'm reading too much into this, Madam Speaker, but the commission shall, by regulation, require insurance coverage for each licensed contestant. Now, the commission may, will require insurance coverage. I ask myself, should, who would, who would the commission require to provide insurance coverage? The contestant himself, through probably requiring the contestant, son, you have to be insured, you have to get insurance before you are allowed to fight, or the provider. And listening to the presentation, of course, I concluded, it's easy to conclude that we're talking about, the promoter is supposed to provide the coverage. But without that distinction, the specific distinction, could there be a misreading into this, Madam Speaker, so that probably promoter will say, well, no, no, no? The commission only requires that that person be covered, but by whom? So I don't know whether we have, we should clarify that here and make it clear without any mistake that the promoter is supposed to pay for the insurance coverage.
Would you like to offer that amendment then, to make it clear, or you want the author to?
Perhaps the authors get more.
Would the author then like to?
More legal experience.
Answer the question.
Actually, that's a very, yes, I will yield to the question, and that's a very good point by Senator Palacios, because, again, it is not clear who is to pay for the insurance.
Yes.
And I would definitely welcome any amendment by the good senator or anybody else that requires the promoter to cover the insurance costs on this.
So Senator Palacios, would you like to put?
So maybe perhaps just, I guess, insert after the word, "by regulation, require the promoter to provide insurance coverage" and so forth. So require the promoter to provide. Insert between, between the word.
On the amendment then, which is the commission shall, by regulation, require the promoter to provide insurance coverage.
Yes, that's the amendment.
On that amendment, are there any objections? I'm sorry. Page nineteen, line twenty-eight.
Line twenty-eight.
Where the commission shall, by regulation, require the promoter to provide. You're adding those words in to provide insurance coverage. Are there any objections? Senator Tina Munia Barnes, are you, are you okay with the?
The commission shall.
Yes, that passed. Yes, it passed. Any objections? No objections? So ordered.
And one more, Madam Speaker.
Yes, please continue.
Again, the same language on the rector, number two amendment, require the promoter to provide, and then, an accidental death and disability, because that passed.
Okay, so do you want to add then that the promoter also to provide accidental death and disability plan?
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Clerks, are you able to get that? Okay, on that amendment then, are there any objections? On that amendment then, are there any objections? No objections? Ordered. On the main motion as amended, are there any other speakers? Okay, Senator Tina Munia Barnes? Yes, as amended.
Sisus Maasi, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to rise in full support of Bill Number 23 as... By the good... As authored by the good sponsor from Tumuni. Tumuni, right? And I'd like to extend my appreciation and thank you, Sisus Maasis, for letting me be a part of this co-sponsorship. And Madam Speaker, I was here when we had the public hearing on behalf of the good author and as we talked, we had representatives from the community, from the MMA, from the Boxing Commission, from Wrestling Commission come out and saying, as we have existing laws right now that govern boxing and wrestling that has been in existence for over 30 days... 30 years, we really don't have anything to really cover the effects and protect and safeguard the effects of mixed martial arts. And as everybody knows here on Guam, especially here on Guam, that this sporting event or this sporting sport has exploded here on Guam. And a lot of us realize that these fighters are not protected or not covered under that existing statute. It was also noted that as this proposed statute is modeled by one of the states in the mainland, quite frankly, Nevada, they realized that this proposed statute would provide the proper licensure of all the fighters, officials, and promoters. And that it also gives a very clear protection that provides for the medical clearance and testings of those that are real crucial like HIV, TV, and so on. I think that the realization of having this kind of regulation come into play, it just gives for a more... A more safer sporting competition to know that there are regulations in place. I will note for the record, Madam Speaker, that when we did have the public hearing and being able to be a... One who has family members who support this kind of event, know that they're in support of having some protections and/or these kind of protections put in place. And for me, this, I just believe in my heart that this proposed statute brings the legitimacy of their sport and then prevents any of the potential misgivings, frauds from occurring. And I really, really also believe in heart that it just provides for the legitimate process to file grievances, claims between fighters and promoters, and it just brings for better understanding. And as folks in the boxing and wrestling community support those efforts, those folks in the fighting community who have said that even with these rules and regulations that are not in place, we still have been following the same. Sometimes, Madam Speaker, it's very important to know that once you put it in line, then it gives no room for any ulterior motives or any deviating from what is within the norm. So, Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank the author for giving me the opportunity to be his co-sponsor. I'd like my colleagues to please support this effort as it puts and safeguards rules and regulations in place now, not just for boxing and wrestling, but also to include the art of mixed martial arts. So Sisus Maasi, and thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Senator Munia Barnes. On the main bill, are there any speakers? Senator Palacios, I recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, the start of the day, this looked like a bill that I'd be able to support. At the end of the day, near the end of the day, unfortunately, it looks like a bill that I can't support. And I can't support because, again, I have to be... The warnings that I provided, I put out, that we seem to center a lot of the amendments around events that occur or activities that are... That center around one aspect, one single type of sport that is being... That is governed by this commission at the expense of the others, at the expense of the wrestling and the judo and the boxing. Sure, we've all seen the lines, the thousands of people who line up for an MMA event. Have you seen those same lines at a boxing event? Have you seen those same lines at a wrestling event? And then to put the same requirements on them? We just killed an industry. We just killed an opportunity for individuals to excel in those other areas. Not every... Not every pugilist is going to be an MMA fighter. What of those individuals who want to be able to exhibit their... Their love of the sport of boxing or their love of the sport of wrestling? And now for an event, so that an organization can have an event so that these individuals can show these talents? We just made it impossible for them. We based ourselves on providing $1 million coverage, medical coverage, for 10 fighters. What about 10 wrestlers? You think a sponsor is going to be able to be able to put up that kind of money? We talk about wanting to make sure that we take care of the fighters. Granted, yes, I believe in that too as well. We tend to also look at the way the events are being governed elsewhere in the United States where there are millions of people. We just took an opportunity to make sure that there's... One of the most popular, the rising popular events on this island does have some regulation. But in the meantime, what have we done? We've just hurt the other side. We've just hurt the other sports. Now, don't get me wrong, Madam Speaker. I do believe that individuals who are involved in these events need... There has to be an onus on the promoter, some onus on the promoter to be able to take, make sure that their injuries are taken care of, that if they are... If they sustain lifelong injuries or death, that there is an onus on the promoters. Yes, I believe in that. But to put these, this, as a result of one particular sport that is being governed by this commission, we just put the onus on everybody else. So, you know, Madam Speaker, like I said, it started off as a great intention and something that I believe that we were going to help. To something that we... In order to make sure that we've regulated one sport in this industry, we've destroyed the rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Are there any speakers on the main motion? The main bill, Senator Pangolinian, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, you know, in looking at the bill, I think that the dilemma here that we find ourselves in is we're trying to fit a sport activity to be all encompass... A commission to regulate the different sports in the area of this unarmed combat. And it's kind of like, you know, trying to... Because we think they're the same. We think that a boxing match and an MMA are the same, basically. Two guys get a ring and beat each other up, you know? Whereas, you know, basketball is different from soccer because they have different rules and regulations and so therefore they have differing governing bodies, different rules and regulations. And other than... Other than it's two guys in a ring beating each other up, boxing and MMA, in terms of the objective, in terms of how the matches are conducted, are totally different. They really are different because of the rules with regards to the activity and the matches that occur. But we're trying to fit it all under here because we don't have anything that covers MMA now. And perhaps the more, you know, cautious way to have approached this was to put a different commission in for MMA and only for that activity because there are no MMA exhibition bouts. Everything's for the money. You know what I mean? There's no... That type of activity does not occur where nobody gets paid or the promoter doesn't make money. Whereas you have sanctioned amateur athletic organizations for boxing and wrestling and so forth. And those activities have certain requirements and certain safeguards built into the matches themselves of, you know, the protection of gear must be worn in an amateur fight and things like that, which don't cover MMA. But this is the attempt to try and put it under this one single umbrella. And I think that's where we're having some of the dilemma that we're facing in looking at this. But we have to do something with regards to the MMA out there and what it's going. We've so far let market forces dictate that and quite frankly, I don't know that it hasn't been successful. I don't know that, you know, we've had MMA fighters go up to the hospital and they stiff the hospital for a bill. I don't know that. Maybe it's true, maybe it's not. But I think those are the things that we need to know when we're trying to make these policy decisions that is going to affect these activities and individuals and companies participating in this activity. So in some regards, we're kind of assuming and presuming and not knowing what the facts are. And therefore, we're trying to fashion something where we don't have the complete information. The MMA promoters came and testified that, yeah, this is good because they want to be able to promote it. It is necessary to have a government sanctioning authority and regulations in order for their activity and business to grow, in order for them to attract international matches, international fighters, that it helps their cause to have something in law that regulates their activities and these promoters that could come in here and basically make the money and without any kind of regulation, run. So this would prevent some of that because they have to apply for the licensing and so forth. On one hand, I have some of the problems with regards to the latitude given to the commission in this bill without any need for any additional oversight over the latitude. For example, if to license promoters or even to license exhibition matches, for example, it says in here that the commission may issue and revoke licenses to conduct, hold, or give contests or exhibition of unarmed combat wherein admission fee is received in accordance with such terms and provisions as the commission prescribes. So I don't know that that language says that they shall be the same standard for every single applicant. Or can they make discretionary decisions that for this applicant, we're only going to require this term and this provision and for another applicant, we're only... We're going to require different terms and different provisions. So... And there's nothing in here that says that provision shall be the same for each applicant. So that kind of discretion for me is... And latitude is too wide and allows for discrimination, allows for differing requirements for different promoters. And why do we want to do that? Why do we want to provide different parameters for the granting of licenses to different promoters? They all should know that they're going to have the same... Be treated the same way and they can point to a section of the rules and regs that says, "We turned you down for this reason," and it's right here in law or in rule or in regulation. But this provision allows them to just not make it applicable to everybody. So... But it's a start. Maybe when we need to fix that, when that problem crops up, we need to fix it. When discretion starts creeping in, that borders on corruption, then maybe we need to fix it then. But that's the boxing industry. That's the nature of this activity is that, you know, those things get sacrificed. And so those are some of my hesitation with regards to blanketly supporting this regulation. And then, of course, the idea is, do we just want this? Do we want, you know, to say that we want our children to aspire to be an MMA fighter? I don't know. I don't know if that's what we want. Those are the opportunities that we want to provide for our young men and women and have them aspire to be that versus it's different from those who aspire, for example, to be get a black belt. Because it's the art, it's the discipline, it's the status, that accord you, it's the recognition. But it's a hu... Hugely different thing to say we want somebody to aspire, you know, for this MMA in which there's no other way to get your recognition except getting in the ring, getting paid for it, and fighting because there... Like I said, there's no amateur status for this. And so that brings us back to the original concern I had is that because there are no such thing really as amateur MMA fighters or there's no MMA event in which the promoter doesn't make any money and goes into it just because he wants to... I don't know. I don't know why you would hold something that says, "Just come and watch," you know? Because there is no body of art for this fight in a amateur, you know, environment. Every other combating activity, whether it's jiu-jitsu or so forth, has an amateur status in which aspiring to something there is something more than just the money. That there is all of the positive aspects of training yourself to achieve a certain recognition and a certain level of skill in that art. MMA is a combat. It's just straight out combat and the objective is to hurt the guy as much as you can so he quits early or you incapacitate him, you know? And that's the fight. I mean, that, you know, you want to win the fight in the first three seconds because if you don't, you might hurt. And you don't want that. You know, it's not... You want to show off the skill. It takes skill, absolutely. It takes skill to become an MMA fighter. It takes discipline and all of that. But to equate that with the skill and the discipline of doing something other than money, it's just not there. It's not... It doesn't have that track of training somebody for this purpose because of the achievement of something other than becoming a professional, you know? There's no other way to get recognition. There's no other way to have any kind of sanctioning for that other than getting in a ring and getting paid money. So the... Some of the terms and conditions of this, I think, you know, I know that many members work hard. I mean, I attended both hearings on this bill to try and come to grips with understanding what it is and what is required and so forth, what is required in order to put something in this that'll give some protection to fighters, give some degree of structure to promoters and the conducting of this activity. And I think to a large degree that the attempt here is successful towards that objective. So in that way, it is a good thing. In the other way, I think that's still open for debate, at least from my perspective. And I want to thank the members of the body for taking this matter up because we do need to deal with it. need to deal with it in some form or fashion. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. On the bill as amended, are there any other speakers? Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we recess until tomorrow morning at 9:00. This should also give us ample time to see whether or not a previous action may have hurt or help the effort in, with the legislation that we're discussing. So I move that we recess till 9:00 tomorrow.
The legislature will recess until 9:00 tomorrow morning.